We're on now, so we'll get started. This is February 24, 2022, the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yonath Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Steve DeYoung, and I'm chairman of this wonderful board and proud of it. We will now convene this meeting of the Yonath Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm sorry, this is written text for me, so forgive me. As required by General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, known as an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. The public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18, or watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. Meeting notices provide necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees until you are invited in. Request to participate by raising your hand, or the raise hand function on Zoom. And with that, I'm going to note that tonight's board is comprised of Mr. Kelly, Mr. Igo, Mr. Frapery, and myself. That's a four-member board. You know what I've always said in these things? If you want a five-member board, let me know. But we're prepared to proceed. We have a quorum certainly, so let's get going.
We're prepared to proceed.
And good evening, sir. Why don't you tell us what your petition's all about?
Thank you. Good evening for the record. My name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of the owners of this property, Mr. and Mrs. Cossack as trustees. This is petition number 4933. Mr. and Mrs. Cossack, Dan Ojala, and Chris Cannon may be online. I can't see them on the screen, but they may be out there in case any hands get raised. This is a request to add a second floor on a ranch at 27 Longview Road. This is a corner lot. The driveway is from Longview Road. What is nonconforming setback-wise is the setback to Middle Road. It is a little bit less, 23.8 instead of 25. The second floor is actually almost all conforming. You can see on the site plan, the dormer that would be on the front roof facing Middle Road for the bathroom that's on the second floor will be closer to the setback than allowed, although it is not as close as the house today. So there are no encroachments further towards any setbacks that are nonconforming. There's actually no change in footprint whatsoever. This is literally just a second floor addition on the house, plus a balcony off the rear of the second floor, but it'll be over existing deck area. We have applied under 104.32 to alter, extend, and change the existing structure. Submit that the proposal will not be substantially more nonconforming to the neighborhood. It will not cause, create, or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion, and there'll be no substantial harm. The use is going to stay the same. The setbacks are going to stay the same. The coverage is staying the same. The height is going to be conforming. It's 11 and 1/2 feet now. It'll be 20.8, so it's well under what's allowed. In addition, the Conservation Commission has reviewed the proposal.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Conservation has reviewed and approved the proposal. Historic has reviewed and approved the proposal. All runoff will be contained on-site. There's not going to be any impact to traffic flow. No utilities are going to remain the same, and we suggest going to be no negative impacts whatsoever. With that, if you have any questions, be happy to answer, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frapery. Any questions about petition?
Just a couple. You mentioned on the second floor, did you say the dormer's going to make it closer to the road?
No, it's not going to be closer to the road, but it's going to be closer than the 25 feet.
Okay. It's still inside the current.
It's within 30. Yes. It's setback from the roads because it's set into the roof. But the front setback on that side is 30, and part of it is going to be less than 30, and you can see the dotted line.
It's still less than the rest of the house with the first floor. The first floor is?
The first floor is 23.8. It will be further back than that.
Right. Okay. That's what I thought. All right. The only other question I have is, there's a lot that looks like it goes into the wetland below them. That lot isn't buildable, is it? It's not a buildable lot? Is that correct?
I am not familiar with that. All I know, what they own is the lot that is shown on, as far as I know, what's on the plan, which goes down. It's not all the way to the wetland, but you can see where the property line ends. That's their property.
The lot below them looks like it's half in the title zone, so.
Certainly could be. A lot of times, lots that were laid out long before have actually eroded, and the whole lot doesn't exist anymore just because of increased water.
Okay. Those are my only two questions. Thank you.
Mr. Igo.
Good evening. Are you here essentially because you're encroaching on one of the front setbacks? Is that what we're looking at here?
Correct.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
I do not.
And so the house fronts onto Middle Road, is that it?
Fronts on both. It's a corner lot.
Oh, I know. But yes. Where's the front door?
Excuse me. Oh, the address is Longview.
Yes, it does, Mr. Cossack.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Who's ever chiming in? Can you raise your hand?
I did. I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
27 Longview is the address. The driveway is from Longview. If you look at the, let me pull up the first floor, there's actually a door on both streets, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Yeah. But it's conforming on the Longview Road, is my point, right?
Oh, yes. Yes.
So it's just the fact that the side of the building is too close because it's a corner lot?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I've got nothing else. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone and let us know who you are. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone and say what you'd like to tell us. And seeing none. Now, is anybody in the video audience interested in speaking? And if so, raise your hand if you're in favor of the petition and would like to say something? Any hands? Please identify, invite in whoever it is.
He should be in, Mr. Cossack, I believe is how you say it.
He's the petitioner.
Yes. Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, the lot?
He's in favor.
Yeah, in favor. The lot near the water is Deed and Beach for the neighborhood. It's not, yeah. It's not a buildable lot.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add, sir?
No, not at this time.
Is there anybody else in our video audience that cares to speak in favor of the petition? Raise your hand, please. Seeing none. Does anybody in the video audience care to speak in opposition to the petition? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input into the petition, open up the board discussion deliberation. Mr. Kelly, your thoughts?
I like the project. It doesn't, seems like it's going to increase the value of the home, and it's going to help out the neighborhood. I think that's a nice-looking proposal.
Right. Mr. Igo, your thoughts?
I think it's a reasonable request. I think we've dealt with corner lots quite a bit in the past, and we are a bit sensitive because there are two front setbacks, which can be very difficult to meet. Just fit very nicely in the neighborhood. I don't think it'll cause any undue hazard nuisance or congestion, nor change the character of the current or future neighborhood or zoning district. So I'm in favor of it. I would recommend the board approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frapery.
I'm in favor too. It looks like a simple addition to the second floor. Middle Street's a dead end, so it's a double corner. So I agree with everyone here.
Me too. I'll be brief. Yeah, I think, I do not see where this will cause any undue hazard nuisance or congestion, nor will it result in any substantial detriment to the character of the neighborhood of town. And to me, it seems like a no-brainer that we would approve this. So I think in a minute, we're going to take a vote. We're going to approve it, but we'll see. Because we're a four-board membership tonight, and because we have invited people in our video audience, we need to take a roll call vote. So we'll start with you, Mr. -- I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly. I don't need to keep picking on you. We'll start with Mr. Kelly.
Make a motion.
We're going to make a motion. Oh, yeah. Okay. Somebody move.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
No wonder I missed it on my notes last night.
No conditions.
So we'll get you up. I'm trying to get this meeting done quick, huh?
You are. I'm impressed, by the way.
Is there a second to the motion to approve the requested special permit?
Second by Mr. Kelly.
Mr. Kelly? Thank you. Mr. Kelly. Yeah, I'm trying to go home. That's it. Mr. Kelly, your vote.
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And amazingly, Mr. DeYoung has an aye as well. So it carries four to all. I'll look forward to a draft decision.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much.
And please remember, the next time I was here, that it's 6:10, and I'm leaving.
We had one or two late ones with you.
Thank you very much.
That's cute. All right, let's get to petition 4936, that of Jerry Manning, as trustee of the Parkers River Realty Trust, Captain Parker's Pub, 121 Mayflower Terrace, South Yonath, Mass. Well, that's the mailing address. The actual location is 668 Route 28 West Yonath, Mass. That property is in the zoning District B2. And if anybody is in our audience and tells me you don't know where this property is located, I'm going to tell you where you can go to get chowed. All right. The applicant this evening seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraf 3, and/or a variance under 203.5, Bylaw Section 203.5, to allow the expansion of an existing restaurant towards the eastly side property line and within 15 feet from the side property line, where 25 is required. And this is to be presented this evening by the petitioner. Good evening, sir, and as well by BSC Group.
Hello, Mr. Healy. Zenas, Chairman. For the record, my name is Kieran Healy. I'm a land surveyor with the BSC Group. With me tonight is the Honored Property, Mr. Manning. We are here tonight to seek permission to enclose an area that's on the easterly side of the building. Right now, it is currently used as outdoor seating, and we are looking to put a roof over that section and enclose that particular area. The outdoor patio that's there is larger than the area we're looking to enclose. As you can see on my board here, the patio comes all the way around, around the back side. We're looking to leave this patio as it is, and the shaded area right here is what we're looking to enclose. And then a small area in right here, which doesn't need relief, but it's what we're proposing to work on in the building. On the building face itself, we're looking to try and maintain the lines of the existing building. This section right now is existing, but we're just going to carry it forward, so it's going to look exactly the same as what's there, the same height that's what's there right now. This approximately is 24 feet high. This section is approximately 17 feet high, so well under the building height of the 25 feet allowed. The relief we're looking for, as the chairman mentioned, is we're looking to increase into the easterly sideline setback, going down from the required 25 to 15.2. Other than that, I'd be glad to answer any of the questions you may have.
Hey, thank you very much. Mr. Frapery, we'll start again with you. Do you have any questions about petition?
No, I don't have any at this time.
Mr. Igo?
No, the property that you abut, is that where you're looking for the relief? Is that owned by?
Barry Clifford and the Witter Museum.
Okay. Yeah, and I presume nothing will ever be built on that piece of property right there.
No.
Right. That's pretty much the entrance into the Witter Museum?
Yeah.
And you have the wetlands right here. And just by the way, we did go to Conservation Commission. We did get approval from Conservation.
All right. I was going to ask you about that, but that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
I do not.
Well, I have one. How's the ice cream shop coming?
Well, we're all permitted for that, and we're waiting for a delivery of windows, and we're going to really hit on that project coming up.
The railing looks very nice.
Oh, thank you.
Really brings that property together, dresses it up. Looking forward to seeing that.
It's one of those properties that you drive by a thousand times and not see it, but hopefully you'll see it in a few weeks.
There's no conceivable way Witter or anybody else, Mr. Clifford or anybody else, is going to build on that portion of their property, the museum's property, that fronts onto 28 to the, I can't find a compass here.
To the east.
To the east of your property. Do you, we know how far it is from the water, the high watermark on the river?
The 100-foot buffer to wetlands is right here. So that it's outside 100-foot buffer to wetlands. There is a coastal bank that comes up, and that's what triggered our filing with Conservation Commission. But to the river itself, it's more than 100 feet.
More than 100 feet to the river?
To the river.
Yeah, I thought there was a big chunk of property there, and certainly, again, I say to you, nobody's going to build on that little strip of land there, so. And is this where there is an awning or tenting, a tent out there?
That's correct, yes. And that's the problem. The awnings are, they're good for sunshade, and that's it.
Sure. And expensive to replace every five years, right? I have no other questions. Does anybody in our audience have any questions or comments in favor of this petition? Number 4936. If so, come to our microphone. Seeing none. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this? I'm sorry. Did you raise your hand for, in favor or in opposition, sir?
No.
Oh, you're just waving? Okay. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to petition number 4936? And seeing none. Does anybody in our video audience care to speak in favor of this petition? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. Does anybody in our video audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input on the petition. We open up the board discussion and deliberations. We're going to do something you never usually get, Mr. Igo, but we're going to start with you.
Start with me? Okay. No, I like it. I think it's a reasonable request. I think it's very tastefully designed. I think it fits right into the character of the neighborhood. I don't see this as any more detrimental than to what's there now. They already have a footprint. They're just really going over the top of an existing footprint. There's never going to be anybody that's going to build between them and the river. Mr. Clifford hasn't chimed in at all. I'll presume he has no opposition to it. I wouldn't assume that he would either, wise.
I keep him very much in the loop.
I'm sure you do. Yeah. And in as far as the other, I don't know what your plans are for that other little four-square that you have there, but that's not subject to our petition tonight. But no, I do think he meets the criteria for the bylaw, and I'm planning on supporting it, and I would urge the rest of the board to support it as well. Thank you.
Bylaw for what? A special permit or a variance?
Special permit, yes. 104.3.
Well, he's asked for it in the alternative, that's why.
I think this qualifies for special permit.
I agree. All right. Mr. Kelly?
I echo what Mr. Igo says. Yep, he's not using up any more footprint that's already there. Yeah, I think it's, again, it's a nice design. Looks nice, so I would be in favor myself.
And Mr. Frapery?
I agree with everyone. I think it would be a nice addition, and actually probably enhances the view coming down 28 as you come towards Captain Parker, so I agree.
Well, the good news is it might actually draw the eyes of tourists that aren't aware that they are going over a river bridge there, and actually see that there's a river there, which is kind of a nice thing, particularly with all the money the state put into it in the worst of times, the COVID times, right? I got to tell you, sir, that you have always presented that property in the best light for this town. The landscaping you do there throughout the pre-season, now maybe it's the winter season. I haven't noticed anything, but maybe now, it's just remarkable. It's a wonderful thing to see along Route 28. We see other properties that are starting to try to dress it up, and I think you started the whole ball rolling there, and it's just a great sight. I like what you're doing at the other site next door or after the entryway, and I think this is just, as has been said, a very nice addition that's going to make it, it's just going to make it more appealing to the eye, too. So modernize it. That's what we're asking everybody to do, and by the way, increasing our tax basis. That's always good, you know? All right. So is anybody prepared to make a motion this time before I ask for a vote?
I'll make a motion to accept the petition as presented.
Any conditions?
No conditions.
And is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Kelly, second. Does the boy care to have any discussion of that motion made by Mr. Frapery to approve the petition as presented and without condition for the grant of a special permit with a variance request being withdrawn without prejudice? Is that correct?
Please.
All right. So we'll just deal with the special permit grant first. Does anybody care to have any discussion on those motions made? Second, then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung has an aye that carries four to zero. You're aware, I'm sure, that a decision will need to be filed with the town clerk's office. 20 days needs to pass before that's considered a final decision, which would be the grant of a special permit that you'd need to have brought to the registry of deeds, recorded, and return proof of it being recorded to our board administrator. Okay? And Mr. Healy will, I'm sure, do all of that legwork for you, I heard about it, I guess. Well, we do have the request for a variance that needs to be withdrawn in tough fashion. Who's prepared to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. We'll do the roll call again. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And how about you, Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
And Mr. DeYoung has an aye, therefore that carries four to zero. And that would be so noted in the decision, okay? Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Good chowder? Yeah, good chowder?
Yeah, they win the chowder competition every once in a while, yeah?
I'll have to go give it a try.
All right. Oh, and that's matter that. How do you take that one? 4937, the Tasty Tidbits Realty Trust, property located at 175 Route 28, West Yonath, Massachusetts. That property is in the zoning District B2, business two. The applicant seeks a variances tonight pursuant to 301.4.4, 301.4.9, 301.4.2, 301.4.6, and 203, subparagraph L, or paragraph L, use table L, to retain parking spaces within the front and rear setback, to maintain nine-by-18, I'm sorry, 90-foot by 18-foot parking spaces in the rear of the lot, to forego in-lot trees and shrubbery, and to maintain a lot coverage of 33,900 square foot, square feet, which is 80.1% of the lot. Who's presenting tonight?
Hi, good evening.
Yo.
Good.
Why don't you tell us who you are?
Yes. My name is Kristen Walsh, and I am here on behalf of the petitioners, Tasty Tidbits Realty Trust. I'm joined tonight by Evangelina Zambalas, goes by Angie. She's back here. Also, Kieran, he's here from BSC Group, and he'll be speaking to the engineering.
Very good. Why don't you go ahead and tell us all about your petition?
Sure. So we're here to address the parking located at the property, 175 Route 28, which is where DeParma Restaurant is. It is located in a high-visibility area on Route 128. And what our client did here was they went and added to the existing parking at the property over the years, and they've also encroached into the front setback. And what we're here tonight is to try and mitigate the nonconformities with the current bylaws. So what happened essentially over the years with the changes that they've made to the property, they were unaware that they had to seek relief from the board, and so we're here tonight to try and rectify that. So what we're doing is, we would like to retain a certain number of spaces in the front setback of the property and the shrubbery that we've put in to help the visibility from the street. So this property, it's quite unique in the way that the topography is. In the past, we've received relief from this board because of the topography. There's 14% of the property on the northwesterly side that cannot be utilized because of wetlands, so it creates a difficult situation all around. So what has happened is, we had angular spaces in the front. We'd like to change those to parallel, and then also, we'd like to continue the use of the angular spaces in the rear setback that have been added over the years. We did have prior relief to park cars in that rear setback, so we'd just like to add the spaces there in an angular direction. So essentially, all of this will help make the parking lot more safe and just a better experience for all patrons who go to the property.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else going to add anything, or do you want me to put her on the board quick?
I would like to just add something. Steven Fazutti?
Hi, Mr. Fazutti.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Nice to see all of you.
Be seen in life, huh?
It certainly is. At this stage, it certainly is. I think what I'd like to state is, having represented the family for many years, I think it's important to note that they have three restaurants. I'm sure you know, they have Scally's, the Armith House, and they have DeParma. And throughout the years, 35 years that they've owned, 40 years that they've owned the Armith House, what they've tried to do is create an image. They've spent a lot of money over the years to try to create a very appealing curbside visually. And DeParma, they sunk a ton of money in there, as you know, because it's really one of the first restaurants that you see as you come in from Barnstable, from Hyannis. And they spent a lot of money on the outside of it, and they're spending a lot of money right now on the inside. And what they want to do is maintain the visibility and the higher-end appearance from the exterior. One of the things that's important to note is, many years ago, the state took a lot of that property, their frontage. I don't know how many feet, there was a lot of, almost, what was it, almost like a quarter of an acre was taken in the front, which is not utilized.
The town had it. In other words, your client built in the state road.
Well, what it is is.
28 layout, didn't they?
Visually, well, you know, they're actually not in the layout. But what it is, is they're close to the layout. The important, the important point is that visually, the impact is minimal. The impact is minimal. And I think that when you look at all of the properties, especially on the other side of twenty-eight, the amount of frontage, or I should say the setback, is minimal on so many of those other properties. That in the vegetation that they installed in the front of, or planted in the front, you can't even see the cars anymore. But what they're doing is, is they're going back to the, the parallel parking, which was originally approved. And one of the reasons that they did it, they wanted to create more space. They wanted to make it a little bit safer in the front of the building. And I think, you know, one, one thought would be like, why did they do that behind the board's back? You know, were they, were they just thumbing their nose at the board? That would be a natural reaction to say. But I can say this, after talking to the family and knowing, and you all know, the, the actual visibility of that particular property, you're at an intersection at Town Brook Road. It's one of the highly traffic and you dead end right in looking at that. If they were trying to hide something from the town that blatantly in the front, that would be the most ridiculous thing. I mean, and I can't say that, that I've always represented clients that were totally prudent in every respect. And sometimes you're embarrassed by what they may do. And I think they're more embarrassed, especially Angie, who has worked so hard to, to make all of their properties visually pleasing. So the long and short of it is, what, what Karen, and she's, he's gonna be able to, you know, details the minutia of what, what it is that we're, what we're doing. But the highlights are, we're creating a walkway now closer to the building, a designated walkway, so the patrons will have a safe passage from the parking to the east to the, to the main entrance. And we're gonna also, I don't know, I'm sure that, that at one point or another, you've gone into that property. There's a parking space right at the curb cut, right on the easterly side of the curb cut, that really is somewhat dangerous. And what we've decided to do, and Karen has suggested, was to remove that space and make it green space and take a couple other portions of the, of the property and create some more green space. One of the things that I think that is more important than ever is the last three years, I don't have to tell anybody in this room or anybody watching how difficult it's been for the restaurant industry. Every day, it's been a challenge. Every single day, they've got to make a new plan to try to succeed. Now, this particular property is very challenging. You have the topography, as Kristen has said. You know, you have the shape of the lot. It's, it's a very odd lot. And one of the things that I'm sure that you want, and obviously we want, is for them to succeed. We don't want to do something, we don't want to create a situation business-wise where they don't succeed. We want them to succeed. And so what we're trying to do is minimize any of, or mitigate as best we can and still make the business successful. Another issue that's happened over the last few years that I think Angie would certainly agree with is people don't carpool anymore. They don't, they go in separate cars when they're, when they're visiting, you know, when they're gonna have dinner out. So it creates a little bit more parking that you need. So there's all these challenges. So here we are, falling on the sword after what happened, and, and looking for your indulgence to try to mitigate, to help us mitigate, you know, the non-conformities that, that have been created there. And Karen, I'm sure you could just go through, you know, some of the issues. You've had the plans and Kristen did a memorandum. And, you know, I know that there's a lot to get your head around because there's a lot of relief, but Karen can kind of hit maybe the high points.
Good evening, again.
The high points.
The high points. Well, I guess if I could bring your attention to the plan, that's probably the easiest way to give you the high points. This parking space over here did receive relief in the form of petition. This is the one that we're looking to remove, just for safety, to pull it back from the street. This area right here that I've shown in green, this is existing blacktop right now where we've got angular parking. We're gonna remove the top teen spaces that are there and replace them with seven parallel spaces.
Can I, can I stop you right there? So what you're gonna do is you're gonna restore that to the way it was before.
Correct.
Okay. And you're gonna keep your parallel parking right there?
Correct.
Now, do you have, do you have relief for that parallel parking?
There was parking allowed there in the beginning, yes.
Do you have relief from this board for the parallel parking?
No.
Have you ever had relief for the parallel parking?
No, not at all.
So that's been illegal the whole time?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, proceed.
Please.
Thank you.
The, the angular parking happened about four or five years ago. The parallel parking has been there for many years. But by doing the parallel parking here, we created a driving aisle right here, and we create this walkway along this section, which is just, it's always been difficult to walk in here with cars coming behind you. So this creates a little bit of safety. And that was one of the primary reasons to get to do this in the beginning. Over here, this blacktop in this area, we're going to remove it. There's a section right here, we're going to remove it. A section right here and a section right there. The whole site is paved. It's an unusual site. And relief was granted in the past for the, this entire back line. So the, what we're asking for is to leave it as angular parking. The relief for it to be in the setback was previously granted. So we're just looking to leave it as angular. With the lot coverage...
Were those spaces existing in the rear?
They've been there for many years.
Have you added any spaces since?
Nope, we have not.
What are you representing the size of those spaces to be right now?
Those are ones that are nine by eighteen.
I was over there today, and I measured in this seven and a half by fifteen.
Well, we'll definitely look into that because...
We'll have to.
Yeah.
They were very tight.
Yeah. Oh, there's no question they are tight, but I...
You know why they require ten by twenty spaces? Cards don't get hit when you're pulling out. Well, and also, so when people aren't, so you're not do it dingin', and people aren't making insurance claims. So how many spaces do you have on the site right now?
We have, I'm sorry, proposed parking spaces seventy is what we're looking to. Right currently, there are seventy-six.
Seventy-six?
On the site, and we're going to seventy.
What did you represent in the previous petitions that you had for spaces?
I know previous petitions had allowed fifty-seven in some plans.
Okay. Okay. So, and, and you're up to, and I don't mean to cut you off, Karen, but I just want to kind of, because you got a lot of stuff that you're asking for, so I'm trying to understand this. How did you get to eighty point one coverage from what you were before?
The...
You're gonna increase green space. No, no, no. What, what are you at right now?
Eighty-three. Eighty-two currently.
Eighty-three.
Yeah.
But you, you increased the lot coverage, didn't you, from the last petition that you came here for?
Correct, the last, yes.
What was the last petition that, what was the lot coverage last time?
I'm not sure what the percentage was at that particular time. But I do know that prior to this pavement over here, the lot coverage was at seventy-eight point six percent.
And so how, how did you increase the lot coverage? By that there?
Strip of land right here.
Okay. So you took the, I saw the angled parking over there.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you remove that, it's gonna bring that down?
It's gonna bring it down to eighty percent.
To eighty? Okay.
Now, the unusual thing about this is, and lot coverage in these particular lots is that this entire section right here is not wet. But by definition, it's coastal bank, and therefore it's wetland. So it can't be counted in lot coverage, even though it's twenty feet above any water. Because it's coastal bank, it's defined as wetland.
Have you been to the Conservation Commission yet?
We have not been, but we have submitted to the Conservation Commission. And I spoke to Ms. Grant with the plan in hand. And as you know, you can either file an RDA or a notice of intent. And she felt that the work was so minor that an RDA would suffice for the application. Because anything within this buffer, we're actually removing blacktop, you know, the work we're doing in this area. So she recommended an RDA for the filing.
Have you seen the conservation comments?
I think there was a, a lot of went out saying we hadn't filed as of yet, and we needed to close out in nineteen seventy-nine order conditions. We have filed, closed the order conditions, and we have filed for the RDA. Now, we just filed. That's why those comments were written before we had filed.
So they're, they're asking for a certificate of compliance? So that's something that you'll definitely follow through on?
We've already requested it. We did file, yes. We did file on that today.
So what work exactly was done without the authorization of the Conservation Commission?
This section right here was added. Not all of it is in the jurisdiction. Here is the hundred feet to the top of coastal bank. So just this section right here.
All right. So nothing on the other side there, on the westerly side?
This westerly side was, as it's been for many years, there's been no change there.
Okay.
There's a reference on the site plan that some of these items that you're talking about converting or that are paved today to convert, those were previously proposed to be set aside as far as green space, were they not? So you're just bringing those back to the way they were supposed to be?
Yeah. We're trying to get everything as close to what was originally planned as possible.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Iago? No, I'm, I may along the way, but I just didn't want to have it all and then not understand it. But I'll, go ahead, I'm all done. Mr. Kelly?
I do not understand.
Okay. Well, I've got a few because, look, each of the three properties you've mentioned, inclusive of another property in Hyannis, the families involved, it's, they're all beautiful. There's no doubt they do a fabulous job and not, they're very good neighbors to this town. But that's why we have zoning, is to, you know, make sure that these things are done in conformity with our law. And that's why we have this board, so that we can approve alterations or special permits or variances to allow for changes in the zoning. I'm very concerned about the fire department. The site plan review indicates the following. Fire department access should conform with CMI one eighteen point two point three point four point one point one. Fire department access road, fire lanes shall have an unobstructed width of no less than twenty feet. Did you attend the site plan?
I did, yes.
Did the fire department actually come?
I don't remember if they were there or not, if it was just a note to the... But a few things to talk about, if I could, to answer the fire department's issue. One is, twenty feet wide is a two-lane road. The width of a fire vehicle is nine feet or eight feet or nine feet. So when they talk about those lanes, they're talking about a double lane. No one-way traffic system has twenty foot wide. So...
Well...
What I did is, just to...
Why are you changing the page? I'm gonna tell you, I couldn't even consider this unless there's fire department approval of this. They put the roads to the rim. I agree with you, one-way traffic might change that altogether. But right now, we're looking at the application of a CMR code of mass regulations that says it's gotta be twenty feet width. And so if they weren't even there to give their opinion whether or not this nine-foot width is satisfactory, that's gotta be done before I can consider this thing tonight. But, you know, we're, we're starting the process and we're moving forward, you know?
Mr. Chairman, can I just address that issue?
Sure, of course.
I think it's, it's important to know that the original approval was, it's the same as was originally approved in the back, the width of the fire lane. And so I think what they're looking at...
That in the ninety-two decision is that what you referred to?
Yeah. I think what they're, what they're addressing is today, certainly, to, in, under, under today's regulations, that would be what you'd want. But as you know, there's numerous, numerous properties that don't have twenty feet around the back of a building.
So we don't get too far afield.
Okay.
You all are in here seeking relief.
Sure.
And so if there's a new CMR relative to width for fire department needs, that's gonna be the one we're working off of, not what was in place in nineteen ninety-two. So in nineteen ninety-two, I've looked it over. I don't see anything that tells me the total number of parking spaces back then. I think it's in the ninety-four decision. Oh, it's ninety-three. Where do you see it?
Engineer of ninety-three, petition two nine...
Paragraph, where am I missing?
Four two.
See, we're gonna add, add six and add something else. Where do I see the total spaces in this decision?
Petition thirty... Hold on, it's petition two nine four two. Petition thirty-one oh three?
All right. Restaurant capacity would therefore increase to one hundred and seventy-one persons and would require fifty-seven parking spaces. The petition is planned, proposes to include all fifty-seven spaces, but not require relief from the bylaw in several respects. What's the seating there now? What's the seating?
The seating? Hundred and seventy-seven.
What, I'm sorry?
Hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay. And what, what does that require?
So it's actually eight additional spaces than there would be now. But we've received relief from those additional eight spaces.
Okay. Just, I'm, I'm just interested, how many does one hundred and seventy-seven seats require?
If that would...
You know, there's a calculation that Mr. Healy can probably do while I have some other questions to ask. So as that's being done or considered, let me ask the petitioners' representatives now. Again, I think it's an absolutely fabulous building. I love the landscaping out front. I wish you weren't even here, but why are you here? How did it come to the town's attention?
It came to the town's attention because the, the parking spaces that were visible at the street, people felt they were too close to the street, and somebody brought it to the attention of the town. And the town brought it to the owner's attention, and the owner's attention hired us to just file.
So a citizen driving by, a citizen of this town driving by saw that it was what they could deem to be too close, and that was reported to the building commissioner?
I believe that's what got me hired, yes.
COVID really did leave people with a lot of spare time, didn't it? Okay. So, yeah.
The front section that you're proposing, I think, is an improvement. I will say that much because I drove through, and it's really tight with those slanted parking spaces. But if they were supposed to be parallel all along, it's a disappointment that they had been put in place. But I just wanted to make that comment. I think it's really needed to have a walking area there too. So what you're doing, I think, is a really good thing in the front. But I have real concerns about the width of the parking spaces that you have, especially in the back. Because I actually pulled into them trying to figure out how on earth I would get into them and get out of them if I, if I had, if I had more cars there. So I was very concerned about that.
Could I make one, one comment on that?
Sure.
I think it's important that we recognize that in the back is for staff. The staff really parks in the back. And so I think that that might alleviate some of the concern, you know, with dings or, you know, patrons opening doors or whatever, the delivery cars that were in the back. That doesn't, that doesn't change the, the fact that they should be, they should be wider. But...
And I think this...
We could restrict it to just staff in the back.
I think the site plan kind of also clearly says that they should be...
I'm gonna get into that.
They should be eight, nine feet wide at minimum, so... Have you seen the site plan review?
Sir, I'm gonna read it into the record in just a minute.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else?
That's all.
All right. Conservation Commission has been weighed, has weighed in on this. And it says, "The commission is awaiting and after the fact filing, the review of existing imposed work at the property. The property also holds an unresolved order of conditions issued on three one seventy-nine." What's unresolved about it?
The order conditions was filed, but a certificate of compliance was never requested in nineteen seventy-nine.
But all the conditions in the order were met?
As far as I can tell, all the conditions were met.
For the original development of the property, including construction of a restaurant and parking area, together with all work pertinent thereto, the conservation administrator has requested that a certificate of compliance be sought to close this outstanding order, so...
And that was submitted to the Conservation Commission today.
The certificate of compliance?
Yes.
Has been filed?
Has been filed, yes.
Signed off on that?
I did.
The approved plan was titled Sewage Disposal System for Proposed Lobster Hut Restaurant, Route twenty-eight, West Yavitch, CD four. That's planned, it was the stamp, professional engineer on it. And it was dated two twenty-eight seventy-nine. The Conservation Commission will need to review the work completed under the old order before new work at the site can be approved. Well, there is no substantial new work at the site, right?
The only new work that we're looking to do right now is to remove pavement.
Well, and to build a walk, right?
No, the walk is just paint.
Oh, it's already, yeah.
It's, it's just gonna be painted stripes.
So here, this was subject to a site plan review on June eighth of twenty twenty-one. Is that for this petition?
Yes.
Yes, junction with this petition? Okay. So, um... The building, I don't know, their comments have anything pertinent to add to the discussion tonight. Planning says the proposed building expansion blends nicely with the existing building. Although no in-lot or buffer trees are proposed as part of the improvements, the size of the existing subsurface wastewater system makes it difficult to add any. Some existing, can you show us where the wastewater treatment is?
If I could. And as a result of that conversation, that site plan review, we did add trees to the, to the fact.
You added the green space you already told us about.
But in this green space, we're also proposing a tree planted in that green space. And a tree here, and two trees there, and one, two here, and one in this area. So we have, these are trees that weren't on the original site plan that they discussed.
Okay. They go on to say, "Some existing pavement is proposed to be removed and seeded in the rear. Consider adding a tree in the northwest corner, northeast corner." And you've said you've done that, where that parking space is being removed?
Yes.
Conservation design review, rather. They had their own design sheet, we're not going to get into that. The conservation, we've already talked about what they had to say. As far as that weigh-ins from various site plan attendees, I think we pretty much have it. So. And how about, Ken, do you know, was the site plan review of twenty twenty, December eighth, twenty twenty, what was that for? What decision was that in conjunction with, do you know?
In twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, it's dated December eighth, twenty twenty.
Was that design review or site plan review?
Site plan review.
If that's that's the date they have up in the left hand corner. Is that, you guys had a virtual hearing on this?
We did have a discussion beforehand, and maybe that was an informal, just to get the the design, sorry, the design review, the site plan reviews input.
Formal on it. Is it, was just site plan review back in twenty twenty?
Yeah, December eighth, twenty twenty.
So, so this has been.
Yeah, this this one was talking, I just didn't see any relief.
We didn't file it, the only discussions we've had since I came on board five years ago was just purely this project and this parking area. We have not sought any other relief in that period of time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, thank you. Does anybody in our audience care to weigh in on this petition? In a favorable light, if so, please come to the microphone. Tell us who you are and let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none, does anybody in our audience care to weigh in? In in disagreement with the petition, if so, please come to the microphone. Way in and let us see what you have to say. Seeing none, we now close it to board discuss. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do the video. Is anybody in our video audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, raise your hand so you can be identified. There are no hands reported raised. Does anybody in our video, video or virtual audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please raise your hand, let us see what you have to say. There are none noted. So that closes it to the public's input into the petition. Now time for the board to consider and deliberate on the request. And why don't we go right ahead and do that? Mr. Kelly, what are your thoughts?
Listen to what you guys have and chime in, how's that?
Mr. Igo, your thoughts?
Well, as we've discussed with the petition, I have concerns about the fire department's ability and any other emergency vehicle that needs to get in and out of here. I've got concerns about the conservation commission approvals for what's been done on the site and any certificates of compliance that they need from the past. I've got real concerns about the size of the parking spaces after I measured them today. I would not support any relief for this project unless every space is at least nine by eighteen. And I would want a, a parking layout of this site and a certification by the building department that has been complied to. And I also need to understand the lot coverage a little better. Says here that you're going from seventy eight to eighty one. And you're saying that that two and a half percent increase was solely because you put the angled parking spaces in?
Yes, this strip along here.
And.
I'm sorry, let me.
I think a prior decision. And another thing is, is the parking demand that you raised, Steve. You got a hundred and seventy seven seats, how many parking spaces do you need for a hundred and seventy seven seats? Do you know, Karen?
Based on tree, it would be fifty nine.
Fifty nine.
But the problem is, Mr. Bezuri mentioned, is that people are not, you generally divide it by three persons per vehicle. But because of Covid, we're getting less people per vehicle and people are meeting there. So the standard tree per vehicle isn't really walking anymore. And that's, that's the reason that these are here. But if I could go back to your last question to explain something, and that is this area right here where we're proposing the walkway. That was originally part of the driving aisle. So what the petitioner did is they took this five foot here that we're looking to remove, but also a five foot strip along there that we're looking to maintain. And that's why the number went from seventy eight to eighty three and it's coming back to eighty one. Just to clarify that section.
Okay.
And the other thing is that it's an unusual property in that you have this large green space between the back of the sidewalk and here. So the distance from the pavement to the back of the sidewalk is eighteen point nine feet over here. And it's twenty one feet over there. If it was from streets up back, it'd be twenty. In this particular case, the back of the sidewalk is that twenty, so that's why it's a little unusual.
Before we move on, Mr. Igo, what are your thoughts about the petitioner's suggestion? Excuse me, that at least relative to the back parking spots, they would make those noted as employee only.
No. No, they got to be nine by eighteen, all of them. They're not going to be, I I know DePam, I've been in and out of there many times. If a spot opens up, this continuous traffic that comes through there, any place a spot opens up, somebody pulls in. Those are way too small. So they got to be nine by eighteen, that's what the engineering department's recommending, and I'm going to support their recommendation.
Mr. Kelly, your thoughts?
No, nothing yet.
Well. Again, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful property, but I have been espousing a position that there should be no front of the shop parking along Route twenty eight since as long as I've been on planning. And now on this board, it's there. And still it doesn't seem obtrusive or offensive to me, but you know, if if we were starting from scratch and you were bringing this in, I'd say absolutely not. I wouldn't agree to it at all because we're trying to get out of that. But this property really does shield that front very well because of the bank and the bushes. I am not in any position to approve it for two of the reasons that I just heard, maybe all three of them. The spaces, I I take a slightly different view than Mr. Igo, but you've heard it's a four board, a four member board tonight, so he can't approve, agree to it. So if we're pushed to a vote, it's not going to pass. I do agree with him that the spaces, as he has measured them, if that is accurate, as he has measured them, that they're just too small. And I hate to take any spaces away from a very successful restaurant, but they're too small. You know, and it happened not on anybody's watch. Well, I mean, it happened on the owner's watch, but certainly not by board input. The fire department, I wouldn't support it at all this evening, absent some certification. And not just a reference to the C M Rs, that the fire department has gone out there and told us that that one lane is sufficient for their concerns. I don't want a fire truck up there saving people's lives potentially, needing to get back to the kitchen area, and they can't get there because they can't make that radius turn. So I really would want to see something from the fire department that says that's okay. And Concom, interestingly, what they had to say was, I guess they wanted to throw it in our court and then say, then we'll consider whether or not to approve it. Well, it works the other way, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, infamous to Concom, we actually haven't been to the Concom yet, so.
Well, you heard what I read though, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so, you know, that's that's their way in on tonight. And I think that Concom, it shouldn't be a problem for you at all, but I think it's necessary for us to consider what they have to say before we consider approving any change or allowance for anything here. Please let me tell you, this building is fabulous, the restaurant is great, we want to see it succeed. Nobody's looking to take away any portion of the, of the, you know, the usability, the, the the benefit of this property being where it's located, as you say, in a place of high, high visibility with the wonderful additions they made to it when they remodeled and, you know, opened it as department. But there are some things we just can't agree to, you know? And one of them is to not consider fire, not consider Concom. And the spaces, you know, we can all have differences of opinion, but I just heard that one of the four members tonight will say no. Okay, and so you got that, I guess you better think about coming back with a better plan on that.
May we just address the parking, parking spaces for a moment? Would you agree that if the parking spaces were the same size as they were when it was originally approved? Because we know that requirements have changed over the years to the sizes of spaces. We know that, that, you know, spaces never get bigger generally in these circumstances when they, when they end up striping them. But would you, Mr. Igo, entertain if we could show that the spaces or at least represent the spaces as they were originally approved?
Well, when you say originally approved, what date are you using?
Well, when the restaurant, when they received their original relief.
I've got a decision here that says there's six parking spaces in the rear. How many do you have out there now?
Well, I'm not talking about the number of space, I'm talking about the sizes of the spaces. In other words.
If you can go back to a previous bylaw and show me that they were less than ten by twenty at some point, I might consider that, but not seven and a half by fifteen.
Now, did you just measure the ones in the back or did you measure them around the building?
I measured the ones in the back. I didn't bother to measure the ones that there were parallel parking in the front, excuse me, the angle parking in the front, because I wasn't going to support those anyway.
Yeah. But the ones on the side of the building, on the east, you didn't measure.
But the tennis club at the Cove was seven and a half by fifteen.
Okay, so the, the ones on the east, we're not really sure right now how, how big those are, right? Do we know?
Those were a little bigger, I did measure one of those, those I believe.
Represented to us by Mr. Healy that they were nine by eighteen, am I wrong on that?
Somebody's mentioned, somebody that's in the summary of reasoning represented to us tonight by counsel that they're nine by eighteen, but in fact, they're not by nine by eighteen.
Yeah, the ones in the back.
Well, you just said, I'll, I'll use your summary of reasoning if you'd like.
I would be careful, I mean, even the ones that, all of the ones that are diagonal seem to be small.
Yeah.
So I think you need to go over the entire layout and find out, you know, how you could put together a plan, because the, the plan from, from nineteen ninety four shows like six in the back, but they're parallel. It doesn't show anything about diagonal, the same thing for the front, it shows four, now you want seven. So I, I understand some of the things you're doing, but I think, I think you're asking for too many lots.
So I think we should continue it.
Yeah, I'm looking at the original decision and I don't see any width or length noted in the parking space.
But there was a site plan, so perhaps we can.
Well, you, you.
It's always called ten by twenty.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see if there was a bylaw that was different than that, because I agree with Mr. Igo, I don't think there ever was, but.
Well, we'll rethink this and reevaluate it, check out, maybe we go back to, to parallel in the back.
Well, I think we ought to give you some input as to what we're looking for when you come back, you know?
Sure.
I think that's only fair to you and the petitioner. There's no urgency for any of this, I take it, because it really, you're not asking for any change, essentially. You're just asking for change to what's been previously approved. And so it's on the ground now. Some concerned citizen pointed it out. We're certainly thankful for that.
They're actually in violation of what they are right now. They might not have been cited, but it's not that somebody walked by and just discovered.
That's not what I'm told, that somebody drove by and had concerns that they were too close to Route twenty eight.
And just in fairness, Mr. Igo, we are too close to Route twenty eight, that is the truth. They are too close to Route twenty eight.
Oh, you're, you're too close to twenty eight, you illegally put in parking spaces that you weren't allowed to put in. Parking spaces have been addressed in prior petitions, so you knew or should have known that you couldn't do it. You didn't comply with conservation commission and prior requirements. And now you haven't, you now have new requirements that you haven't complied with. Isn't that correct?
Well, wasn't, wasn't the prior owner?
One of the issues with the conservation commission is the nineteen seventy nine order conditions that was issued wasn't closed out. That's one of the issues.
I understand that, but.
That's nineteen seventy nine.
I just, I just think we all ought to be clear here, okay?
Well, we have.
We'll work with you.
We have what to do, yes, no question, we have what to do.
I don't think it's insurmountable, I think it just needs to be addressed.
Having, having.
A particular concern to me is Concom sign off, because I don't want to say, make it subject to Concom approval and then find Concom doesn't approve it, so our approval is sitting out there, but with still a roadblock for you. And then you have to come back here for reconsideration. And I won't, won't even entertain it, absent fire department approval of the parking layout. So when you lay out your new parking lot, however you're going to configure it, please note that if the parking, if it's not approved by the fire department, it's not going to be approved with my vote. You may have five and four vote in favor, but not with me.
You're going to get five, because I haven't seen a five member board here in a while. Okay, so, or a four member board.
But keep in mind, we want to work and get this done.
Of course we do, of course we do.
This is a wonderful business, we're thrilled that it's here and we don't want to in any way impact it adversely. We all know our interest in Route twenty eight and keeping it, trying to make it a little better than it's been historically, so. These people help to accomplish that.
I do have to.
I think that, I think we'd be looking for a fire department approval to reconfigure driveway parking spaces. Again, I am not opposed to a lesser parking spot for employees because I'm just not, they want to get their cars, they get their cars. But I think that we've heard that you're not going to get it from the others, so. So take all the comments in mind, when would you like to come back?
Probably, if we could, maybe about eight weeks from now.
Eight weeks?
Yes.
What is the date, eight weeks from now?
And I only asked for that time.
I'm not going to be in Florida visiting my lovely daughter.
And I only asked for that time so we're sure we're true conservation commission. And that that has been resolved, that's the only reason I asked for.
You tell us, you tell us you have a meeting on a defined day, specific day. You can make it subject to that, but not an open thing like that.
April twenty eighth.
That would be, that would be great if the.
Hey, we need to have you sign an extension agreement, be. The two attorneys.
I don't think that the conservation, I mean, I deal with that all the time in real estate where there's open orders of conditions. This is from the seventies and it wasn't unusual because things weren't always as particular as they are today.
Seventies, that's.
Yeah, nineteen seventy, I mean, it was two owned, three owners ago. They haven't even sought any relief. You know, it was all prior owners, all this prior relief was.
It should be of no consequence.
Really, and it's unenforceable, after three years, it's, it's unenforceable, but.
However, our site plan review weighed in on the Concom.
Absolutely.
And said they want to have.
We'll take care of that, that shouldn't be any problem.
That the site is in compliance, and if that's been done and and you need, if you don't need any other Concom approval, that's all I care about.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think it should be lost on you that, I think it's unanimous in this board that you're a very valuable business to the town, you're good neighbors, you do a good job, as the chairman said. So we're all on board with that, we want to work with you, but we do need to do a little cleanup here and get this all straight.
We appreciate that, I appreciate the comment on behalf of, of the Kunatises in Angie's Ambelis.
Well, they have a very good reputation in this town.
And they care about the town, but we care about you too and we appreciate the fact that this is pro bono. And having been on the Board of Appeals myself, I know the sacrifices they make, so we appreciate that.
Well, Mr. Igo and I are certainly pro bono, I wish we could build the town, but they don't allow that. All right, very good, thank you. When you need to sign the extension agreement? And if you do that, it gets over into this file, we'll be done.
I'd like to make a motion that we allow this petition to be continued until April twenty eighth, is that the date?
Yes, is there a second to that?
Second. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say Selena was fabulous, she's been very, very accommodating and really good face for the town.
You know, just, just a marvelous addition in light of our wonderful board, prior board administrator having left us.
No, she was wonderful.
To my opposition.
Tough shoes to fill.
I asked her not to leave, but she said no.
Tough shoes to fill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Thank you very much, lady.
We'll see you soon.
Did you? So our next is that a petition. So our next is that a petition, 4939, Thomas Gru, Jr., concerning property located at 12 Saltworks Lane, south Yonah, Massachusetts. Let me finish reading it, then you can tell us. Let me finish reading what we're here for, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you. That property's in an RS40 zoning district. Tonight, our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 104.3.2, Subparagraph 2, or in the alternative pursuant to 203.5 for variance in connection with his desire to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. New structure requiring front setback relief.
Hello? Hello, my name's, good, my name's Tom Gru, and like you just said, we're here looking to move the house from 5.5 feet off the front setback to 18.5 feet. Rear lines comply, sidelines comply. The reason for all this, we had a fire New Year's Eve and the house has got a little bit of damage. Just so you know, yeah, just so you know, we are still arguing with historic, even though it's not in the historic district, it's not on the register, but it's over 75 years old.
Sorry about the fire, hopefully no one was hurt.
No, nobody was home, nobody was there.
Oh, well, that's good news.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we're gonna have the board, you've seen how it works, so the members of the board are gonna likely ask you some questions, we'll start with Mr. Kelly.
So you're, you're just asking for the, just a setback, so you're just looking for a little relief on what's gonna be on Saltwalk, Saltworks Lane?
Yep, correct, yep.
Is it the same, basically the same plan, Tom?
Real close, yeah, real, real close. Yeah, I think the house that's there now is like 25 by third, 28, and we're going 24 by 30.
Okay.
With a porch on the front.
It's very similar.
Yeah, trying to keep the look the same as much as we can. It's a family home that has been in my family for.
I remember it many, many years.
I know you've been there plenty.
I've been in there plenty of times, plenty of times, yeah, and I.
We won't say how we left.
No, 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 I've visited many homes in this town, I'm not, there's no conflict there, Mr. Chairman. But what you're doing though, is if I understand, is you're kicking it, you're, you're kicking it back, you were, or you are right on the road.
Oh yeah, right on the road, yeah, trying to get it back off the road.
Okay, you're certainly, you're not meeting the setbacks, but you're certainly mitigating them in a big way. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Frapri.
Yeah, my first question was, did you have a fire? And I went by and then you could see the, this.
It's all charred up above, yeah.
So it looks like a whole second floor.
Yeah.
I think it looks like a nice, nice update or change, you're gonna totally redo the whole house, is that the idea or?
Yeah, that, the old house has no foundation under it, it's all balloon framed and the fire ruined the whole roof system.
Is it a full foundation you're putting in?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions, improvements, so.
So would you give me the distances again, currently, it's how much on the front setback?
5.5, and we're going to 18.5.
Sounds like something out there in the cottage community.
Yeah, exactly.
Five feet to the road, all right, it's gonna go to 18, what?
Five.
And so, to kind of sum that up, you need relief because it's a non-conforming structure. But you're reducing the non-conformity substantially.
Yep.
And I don't see how, I know historically, Mr. Igo and I have been in agreement that we want full front I just called for, but I don't see how that's gonna happen in this location.
Now, that would put us on top of the rear line.
That's not, that's not.
Not only that, I think would be probably not a very attractive look either. You don't have that far back. So, and it's a modest structure, it's a nice land we've got going for there here, and you know, it's gonna be, I'm sure, a suite home when you. All right, I have no further questions or comments. Since there's nobody in our actual audience, I can tell the people at home that there is no one speaking in opposition or in favor of this petition, is there anybody in our virtual audience that would care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please raise your hand for the board administrator to see. It's reported that there are none, is there anybody in the video audience or virtual audience that would care to speak in opposition to this petition? And that's another no. So therefore, we close it to the board, to the public input on the petition, we open up the board discussion deliberations and consideration. I don't know, anybody wanna consider making a motion?
I'd make a motion if you want, because I, I think it's a nice, nice change, it looks like it's gonna be an improvement and it mitigates some of the problems that we had for the past, so I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And does the board care to have any discussion before moving it along?
I would, I would just note for the record that I believe the decrease in the non-conformity, okay, is certainly notable and mitigates what is you know, a non-conformity right now, the house is right on the street. I think he certainly meets the criteria of the bylaw. I don't, don't think the raise and replace is gonna be substantially more non-conforming than the present structure. It's a shame that there was a fire there because it was a beautiful quaint old house and you always kept it a very, very.
Yeah, it was, it was, but it's not, you know, it's, it's showing its age.
Yeah, I, I hear you, I.
Especially if you lived in it, not that I, I have, but my oldest son did.
And what, and, and the proposal that he has put before the board here is gonna be, is gonna fit very, very nicely right along Saltbox Road. And I think everybody's familiar with that, but it's a nice little quaint little lane right there and all houses are all close to the road anyway there.
It doesn't go through, does it, I don't think?
No, that, that ends down, yeah, yeah. In the old days, I think we used to.
We went through there plenty.
They closed it up.
We better keep quiet, we're gonna learn too much.
You learned, did you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. But no, I, again, I think he meets the criteria of the bylaw and I certainly support it.
All right, and specifically, those that terms are that little enforcement in this instance would likely cause a hardship to you.
Yeah.
That the hardship is owing to soil condition, shape, and property of such land or structures, and especially affecting this structure. And not the general zoning district, this is a very unique, a very long, narrow layout. And the fire certainly makes it a need, a compelling need. And I guess you could rebuild it right on the same footprint if you wanted to, but it wouldn't benefit this town to see that happen. And so desirable relief in that instance can be granted without either substantial detriment to the public good or nullification or substantial derogation from the purpose and intent of the bylaws. I think you meet all those criteria, would everybody agree?
Yes.
If anybody disagrees, you can sing it out. So we don't need to have any discussion on the motions, I guess?
Mr. Frapri made the motion, I believe I seconded it.
You did, so let's have a roll call, vote, we'll start with Mr. Frapri.
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. DeYoung has an aye, so therefore it carries four to zero. I will draft the decision, that decision will get filed with the, with the town clerk's office. 20 days must elapse after that filing for this to be considered a fully granted petition, that's a technical waiting period for anybody that might want to appeal, but since there's not any interest, it's not likely they're gonna appeal. And then you'll need to take that, bring it down to the registry of deeds, record it, and return proof that you've recorded, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, so we, well, so the members here, except for Mr. Kelly and Mr. Igo, attending the July 8, 2021 meeting of the Yonah zoning Board of Appeals, we now have minutes in front of us. Mr. Frapri, have you read those minutes?
Yes.
And I have read the minutes. Can we agree that we'll approve it?
Sure.
You two wouldn't know because you didn't read.
We'll agree with it.
So anybody prepared to move?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
So moves, I'll second that for a change, and then we will now vote on it. A roll call, Kelly?
Aye.
Igo?
Aye.
DeYoung?
Aye.
Frapri?
Aye.
And then we now vote to end due adjourned, thank you.
Wow, hour and 20 minutes.
Yahoo.